Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Consilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Hi, where's me, bud?
Please mute your phones. Alderman Hazel? Alderman Hazel? Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pusa?
Here.
Alderman Randall? Alderman Randall? Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian? Alderman Ovian? Alderman Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler? Alderman Rothweiler? Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Weigand? Alderman Weigand? Alderman Wigginton?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
Okay, let me go through. Alderman Hazel? Alderman Randall? Alderman Ovian? Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Weigand?
Okay, the only, the only one I knew for sure that might not be here is Alderman Weigand. And further, for the council's information, his stepfather passed away the other day. And so if you weren't aware of that, you can certainly, I'll send something out tomorrow. I think there's a private funeral on Thursday. So he, he indicated he might not be available tonight. So ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to, I'm not going to call out the department heads. There's a, a couple of department heads are, I know, I asked Sheri to be on the line because we're going to recognize her. Royce is in our presence. We're going to recognize him in a minute. And there's a couple of other ones. Michael's here because we just had committee meeting. And if we need other ones, we will so call them out. But I'll suspense with the actual roll call to make it easier. At this time, we are going to have the pledge of allegiance. So if you will, where you're at, please join us in the pledge.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good.
I'm muted.
I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening for the June 15th, 2020 city council meeting. At this time, we have no public hearing. Is there anyone on the line that would like to make a comment about public participation?
Yes, Michael Hagbrun.
Okay, Michael, go ahead.
Hey, I'm commenting on the proposed fee on the electric aggregation. To restate my comments from the finance committee meeting, if in fact this is a fee, it should only be enough to cover the city's actual cost of participating in the program. And the rate should be set based on the study of these costs versus the estimated revenue. Barring any discussion of the cost of the, the cost and revenue, this becomes nothing more than another hidden tax upon the residents of Belleville. Now for some new comments. During the finance meeting, justification for the new tax was that two-thirds of other municipalities collect the tax. Really? You think just because other municipalities collect the tax, that this is a good reason to implement a hidden tax upon the residents of Belleville? Belleville's 9.1% sales tax is already higher than many other surrounding communities. Just last month, the city increased the sewer rates by 8%. Let's not forget that the state has an automatic gasoline tax increase on July 1st of every year. How many Aldermen saw an increase in this year's property tax bills? Now is not the time to be introducing new taxes on the citizens of Belleville. Thank you for your time.
Was there someone else on the line for public participation?
Yes, Mayor Ron Dietrich, Villamar Realtors.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Staff, members of the council. Um, aware of the agenda item in closed session tonight with hopefully bringing back um, multiple home inspectors for the municipal home inspections. Uh, our, our members of Realtors Association of Southwestern Illinois um, would greatly support this if the council is able to uh, find the budgetary appropriation to, to bring those individuals back. We've been appreciative of the city's attempts over the past, now three months to make sure that land transactions continue to happen in the city of Belleville. But as multiple municipalities have came back online with regular inspections, albeit with, with certain COVID social distancing restrictions in place, um, we're hoping that Belleville is able to join them in that effort and as a result, give, uh, home sellers, home buyers, and members of the real estate profession peace of mind in transactions in St. Clair County and hopefully have some good results with the end of the meeting this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Ron, thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. At this time, I go to the portion of the meeting where it's presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And I start off with a, a bittersweet one. I, first of all, would like to recognize our longtime friend and director of wastewater service treatment plant and sewer lines, Royce Carlisle. Royce, I'm going to ask you to come forward here. I know we can't shake hands and we gotta be socially distanced, but I'm going to read the plaque that we're going to present to you. And a plaque's an awful, awful small token uh, of, of how we feel because you, you and I talked this past, last week you were in my office. You've been with me longer than any other department head. Uh, you, the whole time, the whole 15 years I've been mayor, you've been my director. And we've been friends for a long time. I was on Master Sewer as an Alderman when you started and director as 2002, I believe.
That's right.
So I had the privilege of working with you as an Alderman before I became mayor. But Royce, uh, this, this plaque we're presenting to you reads, "Presented to Royce Carlisle in grateful appreciation for 34 years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as the Director of Wastewater and Sewer Lines, 1986 to 2020." Royce, you've been exemplary. You're, you've been just not only a personal friend, but you've been, uh, you've run that, and I, I told some people the other day, it's enough just to manage a department of that magnitude. And every time you have a, a heavy rain event, uh, every time you got people with a sewer collapse. But on top of that, Royce and I, and many of us together, also experienced about $100 million worth of mandated EPA improvements to Belleville. And, and it was a challenge and it was more than any one man or team of, of staff have, have really ever been asked to do. So you've done the, you've done the impossible in the last 15 years. You've taken that treatment plant, which was worn out and we were written up for, for many problems and you've turned it into a state-of-the-art facility. Um, we, we now can, we're much safer. We're, we've got a lot of reasons to be proud when people come down to that plant today. But we're able to grow the city, which we couldn't when I first got on the city council. We couldn't even add another business at times because the capacity was so overused. So I am extremely proud of what you've accomplished during your tenure. And I just count you as a true friend and you'll always stand out in my, my tenure here as having the privilege to serve as mayor. So I present you this plaque.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I appreciate the recognition. I do appreciate the recognition, but I've had a lot of support with that throughout my career. You know, I'd like to thank my staff. They're a great group of men and women that have, that I've enjoyed working with. They've actually made me look good with their hard work and support. Um, wastewater being in good hands when you promote Randy and Jay tonight. I've also enjoyed working with all the Aldermen and women, um, past and present. You know, they've, I thank them for their support over the years. Particularly the Master Sewer Committee, they've gone through a lot with me. Um, I want to thank you, Mayor, for your support and your confidence. Uh, yeah, it's been very beneficial to me personally and the city to have a boss that understands wastewater like you do.
You taught me.
Yeah, well, you know, we've had, uh, we've accomplished a lot together, like you said. You know, I'll miss attending staff meetings, if you can believe that. And working with my fellow department heads, you know, and the city hall staff. They've always been good to me and great to work with. You know, I've worked with a lot of good people during my time here and that's one of the things I really will take from this job is the, uh, the people I got to know and work with. Finally, I want to thank my wife, Dot, and my family this year tonight. You know, without their love and support, I probably wouldn't be here, so.
Time to sit down, Royce. You're going to make me cry.
Roll tide.
Get in here, Jenny. We're getting the picture. Just pause a minute, guys.
Good luck, Roy.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it.
Royce, you're the best. Go take them to dinner now, Royce. Thank you, everyone. Dot?
Thanks, Roy.
You're welcome. You're welcome, guys. Okay, that's the sad one. The next one, she's at home, but Sheri, are you on the line?
Oh.
Was that a yes? I think. Uh, three and a half years ago, we were looking for an HR person and, uh, Garrett Harner told me, he says, "I might know someone." So he arranged for us to have lunch with this young lady. And to my knowledge, that was the first time I met her. But I knew as soon as I met her, she would fit right in here in the city of Belleville. Her personality and her, um, her, her desire to, uh, work with people is very evident. And her smile was infectious and right away, we hired Sheri. And she started the day after she retired at SWIC, she came to Belleville. We originally said if she could just get us through a short-term period, but that short term has gone to three and a half years. One of the things that, there's a lot of things I'll always remember about the time that Sheri was here. Because she took and got our employee manual done that was sitting there, never quite finished, uh, all these years. And then the biggest challenge, what Sheri did and, and helped me and the city, was when we transitioned the township to the city. And, and she, um, took that project on and helped us hire two very compassionate caseworkers that are working for us today at the, um, general assistance and community assistance office. Sheri set the stonework for that, for that whole new office and for the, the way we do business in such a welcoming, inclusive way. Uh, Sheri, you, uh, your way with people and your concern for people is infectious. And, uh, I can't say enough. And, and you and I and Garrett will get to it in just a second, but we all agreed, the young lady that you had been training the last several months has already learned a great deal under your, uh, under your, uh, watch. And, and I think with, uh, being able to reach out to you, maybe if she needs something or working with Garrett Harner, I think we're going to be able to find another, train another, develop another very caring Sheri Faber-Salvador. So Sheri, I have a plaque for you that will get to you. I know you couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, the plaque reads, "Presented to Sheri." Sheri Faber-Salvador, in grateful appreciation for three and a half years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as Director of Human Resources, 2016 to 2020. And I'd ask everybody to join me in thanking Sheri.
That's Sheri.
Sheri, would you like to say anything?
I don't, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect, perfect, very loud.
Fantastic. Well, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, and city council, and all the employees of the city of Belleville. Such a talented, dedicated group of people and it really was a privilege to work with all of you. So I work, I wish you all nothing but the best. And thank you so much for letting me be a part of what you do.
Sheri, thank you, and I will be in touch with you. And, uh, thank you for, uh, you know, what you've done for the last three and a half years. And I know, I know you're not totally gone, but I know you deserve and need this time to yourself and we, we appreciate you. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, as we have questions in the near future, we'll, we'll still be touching base with you. So thank you, Sheri, so much. Okay, now with these vacancies, we got some work to do. It's no secret, and some of you have asked me before, but we've been, we've been, uh, we've been really had a succession plan here for wastewater for quite some time. So at this time, I want to recommend that we would promote Randy Smith, Sr. as Director of Wastewater Treatment Plant and Sewer Lines, effective June 27, 2020, at 12:01 a.m. Uh, and I'll, I'll ask if there's a motion.
Dittelman?
Dittelman?
Steel?
Dittelman and Steele? Chairman Dittelman and Steele made the motion to approve Randy Smith as the Director. Are there any questions about this recommendation of mine? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa? Pusa?
Alderman Pusa, can you hear us?
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you.
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye. Ovian is here.
Oh, you are here, okay. Sorry, Ovian?
Here.
Dittelman?
Or should I?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, congratulations, Randy Smith, if you're on the line and, uh, you'll do a great job. Randy, as some of you know, um, had his job and left and that's when Royce took over in 2002. And, um, Randy will have no problem. Um, he's worked with Royce well these past number of years and, uh, this is a great move. At this time, I'd like to recommend on 7D, the promotion and appointment of Jay Gott, Assistant Director of Wastewater Treatment Plant and Sewer Lines, effective June 27th, 2020, at 12:01 a.m. Motion?
I make a motion, Schaefer.
Schaefer made a motion. Who's the second?
Duco.
Duco, Duco made the second. Uh, so Schaefer and Duco on Jay Gott's recommendation. Any questions on, uh, Mr. Gott? Roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations, Jay Gott. Jay's done an excellent job for us as our pre-treatment coordinator. And as you all probably remember what we talked about, at this time, we are suspending, reappointing a, a pre-treatment coordinator. Not that we don't need one, but we're just trying to be cautious until we, uh, see how the, the money situation goes after this COVID and till our businesses get back up and running. So, uh, right now, Randy and Royce, Randy and Jay will, will handle the, uh, the job soon as Royce is officially done. The next, uh, 7E, I'm recommending, uh, and this comes as a result of Sheri Faber-Salvador retiring, leaving us after three and a half years. I'm recommending Emma Qualls as the Intern Human Resource Manager, effective immediately. Emma has been with us since January as an intern, uh, working with Sheri. She has her four-year degree in psychology, which you might remember years ago when, when I hired Jim Schneider many years ago. He had a bachelor's in psychology. Um, at this time, Emma is working on her master's. Her MBA with an emphasis on human resources. She's been under Sheri's direction for some time. Uh, Garrett is the one that when we got talking about this, immediately suggested that, you know, while we're, uh, we're needing someone, but, uh, quite honestly, under the situation of the money concerns, uh, to go out and advertise for a seasoned, um, uh, resumé, uh, director, we would have to pay pretty good dollars. And we feel like with Emma, she's, she's really caught on quick. And we feel like, uh, with Garrett and even Sheri willing to talk to her and myself working with her, that she not only has the desire and the core study that she's going through, but we think she has the personality. So I'm recommending that we appoint Emma Qualls and I'm asking for a motion for that.
What you're doing?
I'm sorry.
I'm recommending her.
Ovian and the second was Wigginton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Ovian, second by Wigginton. To appoint Emma as the, uh, Intern Human Resource Manager, effective immediately. And you saw on her sheet, um, you know, she would, she will be making, you know, uh, what she'll be making. It's all on there. It's all public knowledge. But I mean, she's, uh, she's a very talented young lady and I think she's got a chance to, uh, really develop quite a, uh, uh, knowledge here with city, with city HR. So are there further questions? Roll call.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Mayor, this is, this is Alderman Ferguson.
Yeah.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, how, I'm not really sure how long she has actually worked since January uh, in this position. And also, I'm just curious, what kind of experience did we have with her in dealing with the union?
She was with Sheri with a number of the union engagements. Uh, she sat with Sheri and she's been on conference calls with Garrett as well. Uh, it's, she's going to be working with Garrett as we continue to work through union contracts. She will work on and, and, uh, it's going to be indoctrination by experience. She and I and Garrett, uh, will have to work together with the department heads. But I feel very confident that what she knows through her schooling and what she's already been introduced to here in a very short time, that she, uh, she's going to be able to take the guidance. And, and we're going to know if this is a good fit. And, uh, I, I feel very good about it, but we won't know till we give it some time.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Schaefer. I have a question. When is, when is she finished with her masters?
I believe it's next spring. I, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I believe it's next spring. But she's, uh, she's, uh, taking that, you know, uh, as we speak. Uh, I think it's through McKendry, I believe it is. And, uh, she's done very well. Her, her academics, she shared them with all of us. And, uh, she's a very outstanding student. And, um, like I said, she's, she's caught on very quickly, um, with the things that she's been exposed to already here with the city. Any other questions? Hearing none?
Dittelman?
Yes?
Dittelman?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, my question is, uh, it looks like her starting salary would be $49,920. And that was just for not really having a whole lot of experience, a master's, or a, a regular bachelor's degree? And that's for a whole year's salary, I hope, right?
Yes, that's, that's the whole year. Uh, she was making $18 an hour as an intern and we upped it to 24. And that's, uh, that's half of what our last director made. And, uh, we felt that that was with her education that she's got and she's investing in to, uh, to complete her masters. Uh, we, we feel like she's already yielded some real, uh, evidence. And Garrett and I talked about this quite a bit and we felt like she was, uh, that was very reasonable when you look at, and he's involved with a lot of other municipalities and a lot of other school districts, et cetera. And, and you've got to have somebody who's competent and we feel like she is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We got it. Also, the, the big key is somebody who can be very confidential because so much of HR is being highly confidential with records, interviews, contacts, situations, disciplines. And, um, the one thing that we heard over and over when we did the little background is that she is, uh, is very well thought of for her, uh, for her integrity and her, uh, the way she approaches things at her previous jobs and also the way people view her. And confidentiality and honesty in, in HR is extremely important. So we felt that we got a good, a good candidate here. So I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Pusa?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Did you say Ferguson?
I did.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll congratulate Emma and she will be starting, um, immediately. And, um, the other thing, the other thing I want to tell you is, besides getting her masters, she's already explained that she's working on or will be, will be, will be taking on a number of the various certificates dealing with, um, ADA and dealing with the racial equality and, and those various things, uh, that, that needs to be. And Sheri was really the first person that's ever had that for the city. And it's very nice to hear that she's already made commitments to, to, uh, take the study for those, for those items as well. Because when it comes to, if we ever have to testify in a hearing or in court, it really helps to have our HR person have those certificates as well as their master's degree. So I just wanted to say that. At this time, I have one more appointment and I'd like to ask for the approval of Andy Gah to fill a vacancy on historic preservation. As you know, he lives in the historic- to fill a vacancy on historic preservation. As you know, he lives in the historic district. It's a position that was left vacant by Christina McCullough and it's a one-year term. Do I hear a motion?
Rothweiler still moved.
Uh, Rothweiler and who is the other one?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Rothweiler and Schaefer made a motion to approve Andy Gah. Is there any other questions about this appointment? Roll call.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Motion carries. I'll let Andy know. At this time, we go to the approval of the minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting, minutes of June first, two thousand twenty.
I'll move.
Motion by Wiggington. Do I hear a second?
Schaefer.
Second by Schaefer. Do I hear any additions? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims payroll and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of one million five hundred, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the payroll in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, three hundred and fifty-five and twelve cents. Do I hear a motion?
Anthony.
Anthony. Do I hear a second?
Pusa.
Pusa. We have a motion and we have a second for the claims payroll dispersments. Are there any questions or, uh, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
We can pay the bills now. Thank you. At this time, we go to, uh, turn the page and we go to eleven A one under finance. And I think, uh, I talked earlier, um, Alderman, uh, Steele, did you have a motion you wanted to recommend?
Yes, I would like to recommend, uh, motion to not implement the, uh, one tenth cent per kilowatt hour, um, fee for the electric aggregation.
So your motion was to not, to, to, to not, oh, to not implement it. So that was, the sm- motion was by Steele and the second was by Schaefer. Is there any, uh, discussion or questions by anyone else? This is a motion to not, to not, uh, accept or go to implement that. So it would be to, to not. Any other questions or comments? I hear none. We'll take a roll call vote.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
The motion passes to not implement that one tenth, uh, percent, one tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. So that was defeat. That, that did not happen. We go now to eleven B Streets and Grades. We've got, uh, Alderman, uh, Wiggington, we have a couple motions here that passed in committee. Do you want to read them as a group or somebody have a problem with that?
I would like to, I would like to read them as a group if anybody wants to, somebody wants to hold something out.
Are there any?
Freedom of the group.
So we have four motions, Alderman Wiggington. I know it's coming from Streets and Grades a little while ago. Would you go ahead and make those motions?
Sure. Well, thank you. On behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I would like to make a motion to approve for any contracting company in the amount of seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars, seventy-five cents for the two thousand twenty-one ditching program, MFT tip funds. Eleven B, on behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve for any contracting company in the amount of a hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars, thirty cents for the two thousand twenty-one sidewalk program, MFT tip funds. Eleven dash B three, on behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve Hanks Excavating and Landscaping in the amount of a hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars, nineteen cents for the two thousand twenty-one infrastructure program, MFT tip funds. And eleven dash B four, motion to approve Coleman Design Group in the amount of four thousand seventy-four dollars for the survey and civil engineering services to complete the final stage for the project near South Twenty-Nine. And the railroad crossing.
We have motion by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear a second to those motions?
Ferguson.
Rothweiler. Duco?
Rothweiler, okay. Rothweiler made the second. We have actually, uh, eleven B one, eleven B two, eleven B three and eleven B four. That were read by Alderman Wiggington. They came out of Streets and Grades, second and by Rothweiler. Are there any additional correct, correct comments or qu- questions pertaining to those motions? I had a hard time saying that. Uh, with that being said, I'll ask for a roll call.
Dillman? Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Motions from Streets and Grades all pass. Thank you. We go to a motion from the Planning Commission. Uh, Alderman, Dillman, would you like to take this one?
Yes, I would. Uh, eleven C one, motion from the Planning Commission. On behalf of Planning Commission, I'd like to, uh, make the motion. Bergman, Roscoe Fund Storage Building, site plan for development of two thousand four hundred square foot storage building located at fifty-sixth Empire Drive on the one point one acre C one light industry district zone property. Parcel number zero eight dash two five point zero dash three zero three zero dash zero two one. Ward six. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with the stipulation of city engineer for stormwater detention plan prior to the issuance of the building permits.
And you're making that motion. Do I hear a second?
Hey, Ferguson?
Ferguson, uh, made the second. We have a motion and a second that's taken, uh, from the recommendation from Planning Commission. I will ask for a roll call vote on that.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Motion carries. We turn the page and we go to eleven D. Motion coming from Economic Development and Annexation. Alderman Cincilla, would you like to read this one?
On behalf of Economic Development Annexation, I make a motion to approve a development agreement with Pinnacle Eatery LLC for remodeling of the existing facility at six forty-eight Coralisle Avenue for a new restaurant.
We have motion by Cincilla. Do I, who was the second?
Second Wiggington.
Second was Wiggington. We have a motion and we have a second. Now, just to refresh for those of you who were not on Economic Development, this is the Old Scott Credit Union and they're gonna put in a N W. And that's the plan. So you, it's in your packet. Uh, are there any further questions on this? I'll call for a roll call vote for this development agreement.
Steele?
Yes? Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi. Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Motion carries. Communications none, petitions none, resolutions none, ordinances none. Boy, that's unusual. This time we go to unfinished business. I don't know of any. Miscellaneous and new business. Uh, we have motor fuel claims in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do I hear anything? Somebody make a motion?
I have stopped, I have stopped there for unfinished business, but if you wanna do.
Well, let's vote on the motor fuel and I'll take your unfinished business right after that. Do I hear a motion on motor fuel?
Good.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Ferguson and Schaefer made the motion and Ferguson made the second to pay the motor fuel claims for nine thousand four sixty-seven, sixty-eight. Any questions on that motion? Roll call.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Motion passed to pay motor fuel. Alderman, Alderman, Elmore, you had a, under unfinished business?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor, uh, June twenty-sixth, as you know, is phase four and, uh, that's when we will go up to fifty people. Uh, restaurants will be able to, uh, meet those guidelines, uh, churches and, uh, movie theaters even. And, uh, I'm gonna let you all and you and Garrett handle how we handle the businesses. I'm curious if we will start our July meetings in the council chambers with fifty people, uh, present in the chambers.
Well, honestly, Garrett and I will talk again later in the week and Jenny and, uh, we'll make a recommendation. Um, you know, right now that's, we're getting closer, but, uh, it, it'll be coming pretty soon, but I don't know if it's gonna be mandated yet. Depending on the topics, we can, it's gonna be hard to have a meeting here and then tell people they can't come in because we've met fifty. Um, but we'll have to, we're gonna discuss it and we'll get back with you as we move forward. Okay?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes?
Hey, actually, as of today, the governor made a statement that we may not be moving into twenty-sixth. We may not be moving into phase four.
I'm, I'm sorry, Roger. You're a little broken up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, as of today, the governor made a statement that we may not be moving into phase four on June twenty-sixth.
Well, it was all stated. It was, you know, that was a target he was shooting for, but we still haven't gotten official word.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we have to take this a day at a time. Everybody in.
Well, yeah, no, I'm, 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 I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, no, I agree. So we'll, we'll everybody, we'll keep everybody posted. Um, we'll keep everybody posted. Now, before we go to the next one, I forgot to ask, but I, I am aware that the city attorney's on the, on the meeting tonight, right Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I didn't mean to, uh, catch you off guard.
Hey, Mayor, this is Schaefer.
Yes.
Can I just, um, get an update on where we are on this street skate project?
On what project? The streets?
The street skate.
Well, we just talked about that.
Yeah.
We talked about that in Streets and Grades tonight. Jerry Boyer came and gave an update. We, we got into quite a, um, long delay with AT&T. And, and when Michael got here in February and Jerry was working on it well before February, we now are, we finally got AT&T through our attorney and everybody to agreed on a negotiated price on, on, um, what they would, um, um, settle with us on for, for moving some of their, um, having to take precautions for some of their fiber optics, et cetera. And, uh, stuff that wasn't properly marked when we did these plans. And, and so it took a little bit of time of negotiating, took some attorney's time and then they had to fabricate some certain kind of, uh, bolts to secure the, the footings with these, uh, lampposts that are going in place there. And with a little bit of luck and to make a long story complete, they should be back to work in two to three weeks. Hank should be from six to twelve finishing to Nar's side and getting things moving, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, um, we in executive session and we, maybe we don't need to go in executive session. That's up to you all. We can't talk out about situation or people. But as you can tell on the, the agenda, we're recommending to bring back four housing inspectors at this time. And we're also recommending to bring back one Teamster because we had a gentleman resign last week, taking a different job elsewhere. So it's pretty self-explanatory what we're, what we're doing. But if we need to go in executive session, if you have a bunch of personal questions, then we can go into executive session. If, if this is easy enough for you, then we can just go ahead and ask for a motion to, um, eleven eighteen B, uh, to return a, uh, Teamster. And then under, uh, the next one would be to recall, uh, housing inspectors, uh, uh, from unpaid furlough status effective June sixteenth. So is there questions? Do you wanna go?
Ferguson make the motion.
Well, okay, wait a minute. Do you make a motion to go in executive session or you, uh, making a motion to bring somebody back?
No, sir. I'm sorry. I'm making a motion to bring them back.
Okay, Garrett, uh, can we do that okay that way?
Yes, if, if there's, uh, no one that wants to go into executive session to discuss the details beyond what you've already said, you could, uh, do these, uh, both motions by omnibus or do them separately. But it sounds like Elmore would second. But it sounds like Elmore would second the motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ferguson, a second by Elmore to, uh, to, uh, terminate the memorandum of understanding with Teamsters Petroleum and Allied Trades Local Number Fifty Drivers and Helpers, Parks and Recreation Maintenance Bargaining Unit concerning bargaining unit member furloughs pursuant to Section 3, therefore, and recall union employee Christopher Hurdle from unpaid paid furlough status. And the second part of that motion would be to recall four housing inspectors from unpaid furlough status effective June 16th, 2020. You two gentlemen.
I just have one question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I wanna make.
Who are the inspectors?
Hang on, hang on, Alderman, Ovian. The two that made the motion, you're okay with what I just read, you accept that as your motion? That was who now?
Yes.
Ferguson and Elmore, okay. Alderman, Ovian, what was your question?
My question is, who are the four housing inspectors that will be returning?
We only have four housing, we only have four housing inspectors.
All right, who are they?
Wright, uh, Alan Wright, uh, Steve, Kevin Herker, Steve Hickey and, and Terry Denton.
Okay, that's, I'm good with it. I, I didn't know if we had someone, you know, or not.
These are the only four housing inspectors we have. Okay, so we have a motion to bring back those five individuals, we have a second. If there's no further questions, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read roll call.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye. Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will, we will contact these people, uh, they will be contacted by their, uh, department heads yet tonight. And, uh, with that being said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Rothweiler's still moved.
Motion by Rothweiler, who was the?
Duco?
Who was the second?
Duco.
Duco. We have a motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Anybody opposed can stay, thank you. Motion carries.